Hi fellows, official call to order. Mikey, are you our scribe? You, me, Ed, Steve, and El Capitan. That'd be you, Jim. Now I just looked over the minutes. Everybody else get a look at them? I made the motion to accept.
Second.
Wonderful. No one coming to our meeting? So general discussion, open forum? Anybody out there besides Eddie?
Just dead.
Alright, I think we'll pass on that. Old busyness. Update on the River Road Athletic Complex Drainage Process Project. Discussion of site meeting with contractor, which I thought went well.
Me too. I think I thought that went really well. They seemed like good people. I'm looking forward to get going. So what's going on now is the town's lawyer, he's reviewing the contract. After that, the next selectmen's meeting is on August 5th. So they will make a motion to approve the contract at that meeting and then work, work will begin shortly after. So that's the, that's the timeline we're looking at.
And they're within our budget. Our budget, not money. Which is real good. And they did seem like very good people. And they said that they'd work with Jimmy on keeping the parking lot open, making sure that the fields were accessible and not getting stuff in the way. That's good. They were, they were definitely good people. What else we got about that? Anything else?
Just waiting for the lawyer to get, get that contract back and then things will be in motion. I'm gonna do a little background memo to the Board of Selectmen, just giving them where, where we're at, what the process was, and then once they give the okay, we'll give first dynamics the okay and be good to go.
They were pretty enthusiastic and, you know, like any small company, they're always looking to fill holes and they said if we need to start a little early, is that okay? Like we said, yeah, as long as you would keep us access to the fields for the concerts and soccer and they said it wouldn't be a problem. Back tonight. Yeah.
That's awesome. One thing that's not being used is the volleyball court.
It's crazy. We need some of those girls in bikinis at ESPN. Jimmy? I, I know this has nothing to do with River Road, it kinda does. You, and you're gonna do this in your report, I'm sure, but your pickleball is killer.
Yes.
You had a good turnout.
Yes, a surprising turnout.
Picture's awesome.
Yeah.
That's gotta go on the website.
Oh, it's, it's on, I got it up on Facebook. We'll get it up on the website soon, but it went really well.
You can talk about it during your report, but I was enthusiastic about that too. Um, update on contract status. I think you just gave us that.
Yeah, so lawyer currently reviewing. Um, he said he'll get it back to us by the August 5th selectmen's meeting.
Okay. Then while we were there, we talked about pickleball, pickleball court. And they came up with a proposal.
So they did, they sent us the quote. So forty-one thousand, six hundred and three. Uh, per Donna in finance, we have thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six allocated in the reserve fund in CIP. The next step would be a memo and a motion from our commission to the Board of Finance. The memo explain, would explain the project in the motion, which Donna would help me write. It asks, asks the Board of Finance to recommend that the Board of Selectmen call a town meeting to appropriate the funds. After a favorable vote by the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen calls a town meeting.
Where does this money be in?
CIP.
For like four years, maybe five.
So it's town money.
Yeah, start tax.
People have to.
People have to kill you. But if, if they say no, where does the money go? Back to the general fund? I don't know what happens.
I don't think it ever came out of general.
Where would it go?
I think they're just, he's just holding it as a block, but it's still in there. Some emergency.
Let's take a ball court.
Down over.
Yeah, I know. It's in the.
A bunch of guys came into the back. It's in the general fund. It's just sitting there.
Right.
But they're, they're holding a chunk for us, but it's not necessarily ours until um, is that interesting? We might need it first.
We're gonna pad that, right? There's like fifteen hundred dollars of a short pole or bar. Which we can turn with the general fund. And if you look closely, he's gonna do the infrastructure for the electrical, but not pull the wire and or install the poles. We'd have to do that down the road, which we talked about.
That's only if you want, you said at night.
Yep, so that could always come afterwards.
That's if the basketball court doesn't shine. It might.
It might be nice to, to light it, but it also says add pickleball acrylic surfacing, forty-five hundred dollars. So that's just raw tar.
I think it's the stuff that goes over it, right?
Nothing, no pickleball lines, right? So the hoop court has acrylic finishing. So we can either line it for now.
We can probably find.
Yeah. But not do the acrylic part until we you know what? The Lions give us money. That could be next year's Lions donation.
So I, that, that's on my director's report. We got two thousand dollars from, from the Lions this year. Um, I can, what I can do is I can send an email with how much.
Reports, okay, listen to this.
In that fund minus the four thousand eight dollars that we used for the uh scoreboard. Yeah, and that's, that it should be here soon, depending on the shipping time. Well, that's looking good.
Did you look at first dynamics numbers? Mikey, you. Uh, it, it, nothing seemed out there. It all seemed in line. The light pole bases and the uh electric conduits is a little high, but that's, that's, no, that's not high. Seven hundred, that's cheap. Yeah, I, I pay six eighty for the bases, so they're maybe making their own. So that's a good deal. The netting with sleeves, J Pro Sports, does that make sense? Fifteen hundred? And fencing with a gate, fifteen grand? Doesn't seem out of control.
This is up at the top.
That's the asphalt.
Fine grade by Thomas paving and pavement markings. Is that?
Oh.
All markings.
I know.
When I saw the acrylic surfacing, I thought it's gonna put like a, another layer on top of it.
Like the hoop court.
Yeah.
But like Mike's got a point. It says pavement markings.
Pavement going in.
Yeah, maybe they'll put stripes on it for like painted. Okay, we could ask them.
Yeah.
And then down the road eventually, we could do a surface, but I think for now you could look at that.
Yeah.
I think the surface would be slippery. That's impervious to water. Hmm, like a slippery, it's damn.
And maybe take a look and see what they generally do for pickleball. You know what they did at Senior Center in Burnham? Interlocking um sixteen by sixteen ritz and they're all preference. Maybe about a quarter or three inches thick. It's like a, like a mat if they fall. I think, I think it keeps them from getting wet. Cause it, that's a little water. And it's a more cushy service and maybe it does help if they fall. You don't hear the joint snap.
Yeah, exactly.
But um, we could, you know, you could ask somebody about the fencing. It's an eight foot tall fence around the whole thing with a gate. Fifteen grand is not a lot of money. No, and eighteen grand to make, you know, to create the space and put tar down. You had the tar, your driveway, what'd that cost? So. You got a long driveway. They're just gonna clean it up and then go over the base, right? They're, they're creating a, a, a deep base and putting tar on top and how big is the space? Twenty by forty?
Thanks. Eighteen hundred square feet, is that?
Sustainable court. But I think they've been a little fat.
Thirty by sixty.
How many square feet was it?
Says, it says pickleball courts eighteen hundred SF on there. I'm guessing that means square feet.
Yeah, thirty by sixty.
Yeah.
About right. Twenty by forty or twenty by court inside. Probably so it's sixty to a hundred and twenty, it's a hundred and eighty feet of fence.
It's a lot. And it's eight feet high.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it's reinforced, you know, there's a top rail, it's not just loose up top. So I, I don't think any of it's out of control. They're local guys, they wanna keep working locally, so they're not gonna they're not gonna rip us off.
I think we gotta, well, somebody wasn't gonna be, but
I agree. I agree. I think we're all um in line with it.
I think I'll do a little more digging on, on that stuff like the pavement marking, so then I think I'll I'll do a special meeting and we can vote on it coming up before our next one. That'll keep us in line with stuff.
Yeah.
If that works out, perfect.
I like it. And I'm pretty sure that the bases that we got at the hoop court are four way. So there's a conduit north, south, east and west. And four kind, five conduits in the middle, one for a ground. So pretty sure we got a, a one inch pipe on the back of each one aiming that pickleball. And they'll just connect to that and we'll extend from there. Alright, Ruby. Um. Anything else on pickleball?
Uh, that's it for now.
And you had people playing pickleball.
We did.
So if you had your own court, you'd be, you'd be able to do two courts.
Yeah. That would've worked out.
I know, ten people.
Yeah.
So that's you're playing two on a side at once, so.
So we did up to nine, just so we could make it go along a little faster, you know?
Were they happy?
Oh, yeah.
That's cool. Alright, why don't you lay a direct report on it?
Alright, so I guess I'll start with pickleball. Uh, first group session today from ten to eleven thirty. Nine participants. I had four signups originally that paid for all six sessions upfront, so I was expecting four, but we got nine. Five have signed up for all six weeks and I got four drop in. Uh, it went really well. I had to leave about halfway through to get back to camp, but Chris, my assistant, was there for the rest of it. And he said, after I left, there were some people on the walking path who stopped and they were interested in coming next week, so that, that'll be good.
Let me cap it at.
Uh, I, I did ten for this one, but we'll see. I, for the next one, I might put a net at the foul line and then another net at the other foul line, just uh spread it out. Spread it out, but we'll see. The, the games went pretty fast since we were only going to nine, so that, that worked out well.
What age? They were.
I'd say fifty and up, I'd say.
I'd say fifty and up, maybe fifty five.
Our, our oldest was uh, I believe, late eighties.
Right.
He was, he was, he was moving around really well. I was impressed.
That's good.
Um, and Chris and I were talking and, and we might have to expand to two days a week if we get more participants and have people sign up for A and B. Exactly.
Do we have um one of those, one of those things called bring people back to life with getting it to gym?
CPR ED. Um, the fire department has to give us one. Um, and we're gonna keep it in the concession stand, so I'm gonna
I'm gonna do a pickleball, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
You could be a hero. Yeah. Yeah, this destruction's clear.
So I did get re-certified just a couple of weeks ago with camp coming up, so I and yeah, I did get it. I got it on the dummy. We, we, we got the dummy back to life, so.
That's excellent.
Um, it, it worked out. So yeah, I'll, hopefully maybe later this week we'll be able to get one over there. I know it, um, last time I spoke to Alex, he said they were waiting on one for us, so hopefully it's in and, and ready to go.
Wow, alright.
Um, so we have, I, I made contact. I don't know if you guys have heard of the CT Ravens, they're a local AAU basketball team. I believe they're based in Stafford. Um, and that they serve Tolland County and our general area. Um, they reached out, they're gonna be renting out River Road uh mid-September for a youth business fair. Um, local youth will have the opportunity to showcase their entrepreneurial skills and sell their products. Um, and all the money going from that will be going to the Scott there Scholarship Fund, so we're teaming up with that. Um.
I think the whole park, just pavilion.
So pavilion. Um, and then kinda like how Wellington Day is set up, they're gonna have the booths on the soccer field there. Um, September fourteenth, twelve to three, uh, it's gonna be set up away from the construction, like I said, it'll be up on that end, so construction won't interfere.
It's Saturday.
Yeah, I believe so, yep.
I haven't pulled that electrical board and cord out of there, just leave it.
Yeah.
Probably needed for that.
Yeah.
It loses, it's coming out of the bag.
I got you, I got you, it's still there.
It's doing it till one day.
Yep. Fourteenth from twelve to three. Um, I'm, I'm probably gonna be there, I'll have games and stuff for, for the kids, so it was a good team up. Um, and I'm just gonna charge them the nonprofit fee um that we charge for, I believe, seventy-five. Um, so that's exciting. Uh, more basketball, basketball camp. I opened up signups for the youth basketball camp that me and Kyle Billyak are, are running, uh, August twelfth to sixteenth at Hall Memorial, and we're charging a hundred dollars per child.
Wow.
So one sign up so far, I'd say our go-no-go is five. And so I'll keep promoting that. I'm gonna have Flyers at summer camp, so if parents want another activity. Five to thirteen, so it's what our um it's what the rec basketball, the ages for that is.
Billy X kid is gonna run it?
Yeah, me, me and him.
Two of you are gonna have that wide an age gap.
Yep, so the plan is if, depending on what the signups are looking like, I'll take the more experienced ones on one end and then he'll take the younger ones on the other end, and we're gonna do it that way. Um, so yeah, I'll keep everybody updated on that with the signups. Um, some more basketball stuff. I don't know if you remember the uh, Isaac Davis bench dedication that we did in April at the park at the basketball court, the memorial bench.
The long ones.
Yep, back in, in late April. Um, so he continued to raise money after that and today, just now at four thirty, he dropped off a three thousand, five hundred dollar donation to the youth basketball scholarship fund. Um, the money was raised by his family, the friends in the community, so just a big thank you to everybody who donated to that. And that money will be used for um people with financial difficulties who want their kids to play basketball in towns.
That's great.
So we can
The whole town, twice over.
I think we use two, two to three hundred last year, so that'll definitely.
You just leave it in a kitty earmark just for that.
Yep.
That's great.
That was, it's, I mean, that, the Isaac Davis. Their special name for that.
The Isaac Davis Memorial Youth Basketball Scholarship Fund, I think it's the, the full name. Um, yes, I was he, at the, at the dedication, he said he had raised two thousand, so when he showed up today with the three thousand, five hundred, I was stunned, I was floored. I didn't expect that at all. So a huge thank you to everybody who donated. Um, and, and, you know, really excited to let everybody in town who wants to play, play this year.
We just gotta bench thing after, right?
Yeah.
And then every year we should mention it when we do basketball signups, that thank you to that fund and if you came forward to pay for basketball as well.
Um, Chris, my assistant and I were talking the other day and we thought maybe, you know, down the road, nothing immediate, but have a, a make a shirt that says Wellington Youth Basketball and then his number and then something on this sleeve with all the proceeds from that going to the scholarship fund, but.
Great, sponsored by.
Yeah.
That's great.
So I'll keep everybody updated on that. Yeah, that's, that's, the t-shirts is way more down the road. I wouldn't be able to get that going right now, but maybe in the, in the future.
Yep, that's a great idea.
Uh, what else do we do? I'm trying to stay in an order here. So we did basketball, basketball, basketball. Uh, just a summer camp update. It, it's going really well. I just wanna say thank you to the, uh, Phil Stevens and the, and Wellington Public Schools again for helping us out with that grant money. We were able to get parachutists, I don't know if you saw that.
I saw that.
Video parachutes.
Ball school?
Yep, they landed on the soccer field out there.
That's so cool.
Um, today we had a magician come through that the kids loved. We had a, a balloon making workshop on Friday. Uh, karate demonstration later this week, and then we're having the um Connecticut Science Center Skylab come into the gym to do a, a mini planetarium for the kids and
That's awesome.
And do some education, so not just all fun stuff, we got some education going on too.
How long can you be in the M's?
Planetarium and then we're so that's actually the, the children's museum, I think in West Hartford, I think it's at, and then
Oh, one that had the whale out front?
Yeah, and then Connecticut Science Center, they're doing uh, an electricity workshop. I think they're bringing one of those.
Handograph generator.
Yeah, one of those and then a bubble workshop too.
Um, that's cool.
So we get a lot of stuff going on.
You gotta get little girls with long hair.
Get this sticking up. Think this might be Stu.
Stu, is that you?
That's me.
Hey, Stu.
That's Stu. At seven twenty-three.
Gentlemen.
Hey, Stu.
Um, so yeah, thank you again, Phil, Phil and the schools for uh, for helping us out with that. The kids, the kids have been great. Um.
How many?
About forty to forty-five every week.
It's a good size, right?
Yeah. Um. They're loving the pond, which I'll, I'll get to the pond in a bit. Um, first I wanna talk about the James Taylor trip was a great success. We had sold out um, our allotment of tickets. Uh, the next trip coming up is a trip to Salem, Massachusetts, I believe November second, which is Bolton's trip for this year. Um, I'm gonna start promoting that soon. Uh, they're going to the um, which, the which area? November second, which is, you know, a little after Halloween, but I guess last year when they tried to do it, it was a mess going
Too much going on.
On Halloween, so. Um. So I was approached by Kyle Seppi, I apologize if I'm butchering that name. Um, and he is a local Eagle Scout and he is looking for an Eagle project. Um.
Just tell her.
S E P E. Uh, his brother's one of our lifeguards. Um. So my, my thought, and I wanted to bring it up to see if anybody else had ideas, or maybe there was one that was planned in the past that never happened, is um, having him refurbish the recreation area over at the senior center, which has, it, it needs some, needs some help. Um, and then opening up just that path to make it a little more accessible for, for everybody. But there's a bocce court over there that could use some help and then the um, the benches and the picnic table are, are a mess, so refurbish the
Paint them, stain them.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So I, I, like I said, I didn't know if there was anything in the past that would be a better idea that we could do, but that's, that's where my thoughts personally.
Normally give you an idea or do we?
So he, he asked me, he said, do you have any? You know, do you have anything? And I told him, you know, I have, you know, this in mind, but let me talk to my commission to see if there was maybe anything else that I'm missing, but that's, that was my first inclination. Um.
That originally Scott.
Not sure.
I, I don't know. That our bocce court was built by an eagle and he brought that to you.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that's community oriented. I think that's fine.
Yeah.
And if he clears that path so they can walk to a ballgame.
Exactly.
He can bring into his scout master and I can discuss it.
Yeah, so.
You were over there. Some ideas.
Yeah, real conscious.
So you just, you know, you don't dictate this.
Yeah.
Stuff needs to be done over there. He's gotta make a proposal.
You know, so I'll send them an email and um, we'll get that moving. Um, I'll keep everyone updated on that for sure. What else do we have? So the pond, Paul's Pond. Um. The big thing is the online payment option that we started this year. We've sold twenty-one passes online for a total of one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars in additional revenue. Um, a, a lot easier for people just going online with the credit card, getting it done like that. Um, lot of good feedback on that too, so it I'm gonna try and do that for all our programs, but it's, it's tough with the, it, it's a tough website to navigate, so I'm gonna, that's gonna be my kind of pet project for the next couple of months.
That was eleven hundred, all in online only.
Online only. Um, I believe we're around three thousand total, which is, which is solid.
Why not? It's funny this year? I think we still lose money.
But yeah, yeah.
It's like the government. We're broke, but we're not as broke as you thought.
Um, we did rent it out to Ashford again, so we'll be getting a hundred fifty from them for two days last week. The, they, their camp went over and used it.
The pond?
Yeah, yep. Um, just
Charged them?
Yeah.
Lifeguards.
Just, yeah, just the lifeguard pay for the day, yeah. Um, speaking of lifeguards, unfortunately, our head lifeguard, he uh, he just got ten stitches in his foot. Not from here, like uh, not from us. Um, something separate, so he's going to be out for ten days. Um. We're working on filling the schedule, but there might be some days over the next two weeks where we'll have to close just cause there's pre-planned vacations that some of the staff have, so I'm, we're working on filling the holes and we'll post on Facebook and our website if we have to close down for those days.
And is it too late to like hit other towns and ask if they got?
I'm gonna reach out to the community center in Mansfield, yeah.
I don't know how that works, how you would hire them as temps or whatever.
Yeah, I'll have to work with, with finance, but it's, we're gonna try.
There's gotta be a way to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, if, even if it's just a quick signature, I can get that done, done right away.
That'd be a good idea, not to close the pond.
Yeah. Um, thankfully the rain's been not as bad as last year so far, so we haven't had to close, I think we had to close we had to close a lot of days last year, but I think we've only had to completely close one day so far this year.
You've got some hot, muggy days.
Yeah, yeah.
Pack down there.
Yeah, yes. Um, what else?
Hey, Jimmy?
Yes.
How many passes did you sell last year?
Uh, I have to take a look at the numbers. Um, definitely not as much as this year.
Okay.
Like a dollar amount or, or pass number?
No, no, just the number of passes. Just curious how it's fluctuating into going up or
I'd say
It's a nice, it's a nice resource.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate people use it.
If I had to guesstimate, I'd say we sold twenty-five or so last year and this year into, just for family resident passes, we've sold twenty-seven. And then in I'd say we're up around thirty-five or forty so far this year.
You definitely overlasted.
Definitely, a hundred percent.
Weather helps.
Yeah, I, I think I, I, the, the day that I sold the most was when we had the second budget referendum and it was right around a hundred degrees, so people stopped in to vote and then bought a pass, so that, that worked out.
I know we drowned ourselves after that budget referendum, did they?
Thankfully, no.
Uh, do we get that tested, contest?
Eastern Highlands tests it. Um, so far equal eye levels, well below the, the good limits. I think forty forty-five particles per, and the limit is two oh five, I believe.
Oh.
Yes.
How often do they test?
Every Monday or, I get the reports on Tuesday, so it must be every Monday. Yeah.
There are lots of springs feeding that, what is it?
Yeah.
He just studied last year. Pull some fish out. Very clean pond.
Yeah. You can, you can feel like where the springs cut, like the water's a different temperature. You can feel it, yeah.
Um, stay out of the spots where the water's a little warmer and your kids in.
Exactly. Um, and then the last thing I have is about the concerts. Uh, first one with Bruce John was on July tenth. We had to cancel last Wednesday and this Wednesday is not looking good either, so um, I'm in contact with the band, we'll see if it rains. Um, last week's makeup day is August eighth. Uh, it's a Thursday, so we're kind of it's gonna be a Thursday in the park instead of Wednesday. Um, but we had a really good turnout, I'd say between seventy, a hundred people. Um, I got it up on Facebook, which we didn't really do last year, and there, there were a lot of younger families, I'd say, that saw it that way, and then we put out a town notice to Younger families, I'd say that saw it that way and then we put out a town notice too, so. Um, made fifty-four dollars in revenue from the snack shack, so that's a nice, nice little bonus for us.
Kind of shape, is that ended with?
It's good.
Is it plain?
Yeah, we've been keeping it up since, um, Wellington Day, it's looking good.
What are you, just bagged, bagged stuff?
Uh, we did bottled water, ice cream and chips, uh, on the tenth. We'll probably good, stay with the same, yeah.
Go last week was canceled?
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Yep, yeah, and then last I checked, the weather for this Wednesday was not looking too great either, unfortunately, I don't know if that's changed, but. Um, Wednesday morning, I'm gonna reach out to the band and let them know one way or another.
Are they, you know, viable if they find out?
Yeah, so they said let, let them know, um, I'm probably gonna call them around ten and then we'll work with them to get a, a makeup date.
Who we pay a band for a show?
Barry's, um, Bruce was four hundred, the one last week was three fifty, our big one was Val Rogers and her. She's bringing an ensemble this year, which was fifteen hundred. But, um.
She's good.
Donations covered everything, so it's, we, we did well on donations this year.
She must bring a diverse crowd.
Yeah, oh, yeah, she was definitely the most well attended last year, I'd say, so I'm expecting the same, same again this year.
She's local, she's gonna be talented.
Yeah. And I believe that's it for me, I think I covered everything.
Stu, you got anything you wanna drop in on that?
Well, I'm, I'm late to the meeting, my apologies, just curious if there's anything new on River Road.
We just talked about the contracts, Jimmy's getting it through the selectmen's office and.
Good.
You saw the contracts for the pickleball court?
Yep.
It's a little heavy, so we'd have to make up the difference.
I think we agreed to that, so it sounds fine.
Worth it. Worth it.
So the contract first and then we go to the selectman or concurrently or same time? Contract signed and then we go to the selectman, I guess.
Two, two different contracts, we'll have to get one made up for the pickleball court, um, and then the, the lawyer is reviewing the. Um, drainage one right now, um, and then we'll have it ready for the August fifth selectmen's meeting.
That sounds good.
D I P will have to go to a town vote, so we all have to make sure we get a lot of family members in attendance.
Okay.
Right?
Good idea.
I can add my new pickleball.
You proved to. Are they all Wellingtonians?
Beliefs.
Are we Wellingtonians or Wellingtonites, what are we?
Wellington, Wellingtonite?
I don't know. I like Wellingtonian.
So I got.
Yeah.
I am.
I'm glad I was here for that, that was good.
Yes. Alright, what else we got?
Uh, the next tricentennial commission meeting scheduled for August thirteenth, but I might try and get that moved. Uh, so I can run my basketball camp, so, uh, that's to be determined. That's, that's going well, we stepped up from every three months to meeting every two months, just to. Get some more input and plan things out a little bit more.
And you're the point man?
Yes.
Lucky dog.
So I think that, uh, at our last meeting, we, we talked a bit about. Doing, instead of having one big thing, is doing a bunch of smaller things throughout the year, um, it, you know, Wellington Day, do something then. Uh, tree lighting, other town events like that, you know, the Veterans Day ceremony, um, and. Uh, maybe like, uh, I, I knew the two seventy-fifth did a tour, so we were thinking something along those lines too of the historic areas. Here in town.
Cool.
You could do like a fifty thousand dollar fireworks show.
Who did that?
Oh, Stafford Savings.
They got money in Stafford, twenty grand.
Do you have a budget, Jimmy?
Uh, not yet, we're, we're gonna go to the Board of Finance, Jeff Pruzak from the, uh, Board of Finance is on the committee, so he's gonna, he's. He's, we're gonna work with him and he's gonna work with us on that.
That drives everything.
Alright, that'll be fun, when is the tricentennial?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Seven, seventeen twenty-seven.
I, I'm gonna make it. Alright, we got anything else?
I, I think that's everything, I, I always get worried that I'm missing something, but I, I had a pretty good amount of stuff here, so I, I think I got everything.
Alright, so you're on top of. Moving pickleball forward?
Yeah.
Memo and, and work with everybody.
Yeah.
Real contract.
Yep, I have a, a template for the motion for the Board of Selectmen meeting that Don and I came up with together for the drainage, so I'll just. Do something similar with her for that, she, she's been a huge help in finance, so.
And I think I would tell people at this selectmen's meeting or whoever you're gonna talk to that, you've already had a great turnout for pickleball.
Yeah.
Without having a pickleball.
Yeah.
Yeah, remind us. The fifth, right, Jimmy, August fifth is selectmen?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I'd like to go to that.
And maybe a few of us might attend if you're presenting.
Yeah.
Remind us all.
For sure.
It's a good idea. That's, yeah, we should all try and get there, Stu.
I think so.
Yep.
I think, I think a, a good showing would be helpful.
I agree.
Don't make it too easy.
Right, right, shall we care?
Oh, I'll, I'll send out a, uh, email with my little background memo that I'll present to them to everybody beforehand.
Just show these guys your pickleball picture?
Timeline, I guess.
I thought it was a great pitch.
I don't know if you could see, this was the turnout for, uh, pickleball, good, good group.
That's great, wow, fantastic. Thank you for that visual.
Red.
That's a good, that, I'm impressed with the number of people, that's good.
That great?
Yeah, I think so.
That's great.
You put in a real card, it's gonna make a difference. We put in a real card, yeah.
Is this all our stuff that they use?
Yes, uh, some people brought their own paddles, but. The wood paddles are ours, a lot of the nets.
Awesome.
Especially with a fence, oh man, what a difference that makes, chasing balls everywhere.
Yes, exactly right.
Yes.
Half the exercise is chasing the balls.
Alright, and I think when they write the contract, we should make sure that they write in the height of that fence if they didn't write, yeah, they should write a height in.
Yeah, yep.
Is eight and up?
I, I, I think Carl put eight, I'd have to look back at the plans, I think he.
Oh, there's a plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think we put eight.
You're, you're ten feet away from the line and your pickles going out, you ever hit one of those things, they don't really. You don't go like it's like a wiffle ball, right?
If it, if it bounces, it definitely wouldn't get over the ice, yeah, it would, it dies, uh, if somebody.
It's a very unique sound.
Little too much.
And there's quite a bit of complaint coming on from condo associations from listening to that sound, believe it or not. But, you know, River Rose kind of off by itself, which is good.
That, they're, they're putting one in in Waterville where we are and everybody around it complained, it's the golf.
Oh, yeah.
And I looked it up, no louder than a tennis court and there's thirteen next to it.
A bit more of a pop.
But, but they say overall, the overall sound is not worse.
Okay.
Sign, pickleball while the concert's.
Alright.
Highway noise would drown it out.
Yeah, let it rip.
Well, that's for sure, yeah, the jig breaks.
Alright, fellas, are we adjourning? I make a motion to adjourn. And it is seven forty-one.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody, have a good one.
Thank you. Talk, talk soon.
Talk soon.
Good meeting, fellas.